Good evening. Welcome to this Hamlet City Council regular monthly meeting. We're glad to see everyone here tonight. The first item of business is the invocation which will be given by Councilman Lewis.
Let us pray. Almighty Father in heaven, we thank you for the day that you've given us. We thank you for this opportunity to conduct business for the city of Hamlet. We would ask for your guidance and your direction. Lord, we would also like to say that we would like to ask your blessings upon our veterans, Lord, those that are active and those that are inactive, Lord. We thank you for each one that has given their time, some have given their lives. And we would ask, Lord, those that have lost their lives, that you would touch their family at this time, that you would give them comfort, that you would give them peace. And, Lord, we thank you for the freedom that they have afforded to us tonight, Lord. And we want to give you the honor for all things, for it's in Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. At this time, gentlemen, you have before you the agenda for our meeting tonight. Do I have a motion on that?
So I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Got a motion?
Second.
I've got a second. Are there any changes, additions, deletions, or further comments? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Also, you have before you the October 13 regular meeting and the minutes from the closed session minutes. Do I have a motion on that?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Are there any changes, deletions, additions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? At this time, we come to the point in our meeting where we have comments from attendees and anyone who has anything that they need to say to us or would like to talk to us about that is not on the agenda for tonight, we would ask you to please come forward at this time. Okay, if not, we'll close comments section. Other items of new business. The first item of new business is Resolution Number 2015-08, Appreciation and Presentation of Key to the City. Several members of the Seaboard Festival have recommended the city present a key to Mrs. Nancy Avery for her 32 years of service to the Seaboard Festival Committee as she is stepping down this year. At this, at this point in time, gentlemen, I have a resolution that I will read that says, "Whereas the city of Hamlet, North Carolina wishes to acknowledge and express sincere appreciation to Nancy Avery for her dedicated service, and whereas Nancy Avery was born and raised in Richmond County, North Carolina, and is a longtime resident, and whereas Ms. Avery served on the Board of Directors of the Hamlet Seaboard Festival Committee from 1983 until 2015, and whereas the dedicated continuous efforts of Nancy Avery to the Seaboard Festival Committee helped to raise thousands of dollars to local charities in the community, and whereas Ms. Avery has helped to build the Seaboard Festival into being the largest one-day festival event in Richmond County, attracting approximately 20,000 people into the community, and whereas Nancy Avery has demonstrated exemplary community service through her involvement with the Hamlet Seaboard Festival for 32 years, as it has developed from a small city and county event to a major southeastern festival of renowned esteem, and whereas Nancy has served in many other civic and charitable endeavors, including the Hamlet American Legion Auxiliary Board, whereby seeking to make the city of Hamlet and the community a better place to live. Therefore now, now therefore it is be it resolved by the City Council of Hamlet, North Carolina, that deep gratitude and sincere appreciation is expressed and resignation is awarded, recognition is awarded to Nancy Avery for her leadership and exemplary service to the citizens of Hamlet, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be made part of the permanent records of the city of Hamlet and a copy thereof which has been duly executed by Mayor William Bayless, and witness thereof, I, William Bayless, Mayor of the city of Hamlet, have hereunto set my hand and cause to be affixed official seal of the city of Hamlet this 10th day of November, 2015." Do I have a motion from council?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? At this time, Nancy, I would ask you to please come up.
Bill.
And you want to pay.
Nancy, I'm not.
Mayor, I'd like to say just a few words that Nancy, you, you were there when we had a half a block, and now we're all the way up to the service station past the library. This year had to be probably one of the biggest and best we've ever had, more vendors and everything. And I tell you, your hard work and dedication all these years has been, has been unreal, and we appreciate it.
I would like to say that this year we had our new race director on, and we had the biggest 5K we've ever had, and our 5K is the second largest in North Carolina and the oldest.
Wow. Thank you, Nancy. That's a lot of big, said huge mistake, and they did a really great job with it. He, Duncan, he's not a head.
It had 200 this, this past, that October.
And the car show was huge too. Car show was, how many entries were in the car show?
The car show, Jack, did a great job with it. We had, how many car show, how many cars we have in Jackson?
Probably 80.
About 80, and of course, weather also, and the street was full, Miranda did a good job, filled up the whole street. So it was one of the best we've ever had, one of the biggest.
Thank you.
And we appreciate the city all they've done for us.
Thank you. Did anyone else want to make any comments back there? All right, gentlemen, at this time, you have before you a resolution for, to surplus K-9 Casey. Whereas the city of Hamlet owns Police K-9 Casey who has served the city for approximately 10 years, and whereas the City Council of the city of Hamlet, upon recommendation of the police chief, grants full service retirement for Police K-9 Casey, and whereas, under General Statute 168, 266-D, permits the City Council to authorize the disposition of personal property that is without value, and whereas former employee and handler, Brittany Emmerich, has agreed upon accepting custody of the dog, will and assume all liability and responsibility for the care of the animal for the remainder of its life. Now therefore be it resolved in accordance with Section 10 Retiring Canines of the Hamlet K-9 Policy Guidelines, that the Hamlet City Council authorizes the purchase of K-9 Casey by handler Brittany Emmerich for the amount of $1 effective November the 12th, 2015. Do I have a motion on that, gentlemen?
So moved.
Okay. Okay, I've got a motion and a second.
We have to pay retirement or 401K or anything?
Six weeks.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The next item of business is a resolution adopting a policy for mutual assistance with other law enforcement agencies. Chief, do you have comments on this, Forrest, please?
Yes, sir. It was, um, it was discovered by one of the local agencies that, you know, we have reciprocal agreements to provide coverage for one another, but there's a technicality that came into a court case where I think a DWI was challenging and this document was needed, and so we're trying to make sure that we're in compliance, and I think this would help tie the knot and make the, uh, make it what we need.
How often does this have to be redone?
You can write them, you can write them indefinitely, as long as the same agency heads in place. How'd you write, I mean, does yours say that or is yours yearly?
They don't have a date on it, I don't think.
Okay.
I mean, did we put it, did we put in a date?
So it's good for as long as, as long as the same agency heads in place, both locations?
Okay, this is Resolution Number 2015-10, Adopting a Policy for Mutual Assistance with Other Law Enforcement Agencies. Whereas pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes 168, 288, the governing body of a city may adopt appropriate guidelines for the purpose of mutual assistance with other municipal and county law enforcement agencies. And whereas pursuant to said laws, the law enforcement assistance to be rendered authorizes lending officers to work temporarily with officers of the requesting agencies, including in an undercover capacity, and lending equipment and supplies. And whereas it is deemed to be in the best interest of the citizens to adopt a reasonable policy and guidelines whereby reciprocal law enforcement assistance can be both rendered to and obtained from other governmental jurisdictions, and whereas such reciprocal assistance is necessary for effective law enforcement for the protection of the citizens of any applicable required law enforcement agency. Now therefore be it resolved by the Hamlet City Council that the chief of police is hereby authorized to enter into mutual assistance agreements with other municipal and county law enforcement agencies, provided that the head of the requesting law enforcement agency makes such a request in writing. The chief of police is hereby authorized to permit officers of the Hamlet Police Department to work temporarily with officers of the requesting agency, including in an undercover capacity, and the chief of police may lend such equipment and supplies to requesting agency as he or she may deem advisable. All such requests and authorizations shall be in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 168-288 as applicable. While working with a requesting agency, an officer shall have the same jurisdiction, powers, rights, privileges, and immunity, including those related to the defense of civil actions and payment of judgments, as the officers of the requesting agency, in addition to those officers, and those the officer normally possesses. While on duty with the requesting agency, an officer shall be subject to the lawful operational commands of the officer superior in the requesting agency, but the officer shall, for personnel and administrative purposes, remain under the control of the officer's own agency, including for purposes of pay. An officer shall furthermore be entitled to workers' compensation and the same benefits to the extent as though he were functioning within the normal scope of the officer's duties. The chief of police is hereby authorized to enter into a mutual assistance agreement with other law enforcement agencies in accordance with such reasonable arrangements, terms, and conditions as may be agreed upon between the respective heads of the law enforcement agencies. This 10th day of November, 2015. Do I have a motion, gentlemen?
I make a motion that we accept the mutual aid agreement.
Okay, got a motion from Councilman Martin.
Second.
Second from Councilman Lewis. Any further comments?
Scott, are you gonna have something in place that, that you're always aware when someone's here from another jurisdiction working? I mean, is it gonna be a policy of yours that if somebody's here performing any kind of duty that you're, you or your appointee is aware of it?
Yes, sir. Yeah, this, this is, now, we have already in place mutual aid agreements.
Right.
With locals around the agencies. This right here, just, we had to have this coming out of that court case that gets you guys blessings to, allows to enter into those agreements.
It just allows broad jurisdiction and broad responsibility, and I think you need to be, or your appointee should always be aware when somebody's here.
Right. And it's mainly what, mainly what this stemmed from is the traffic checkpoints, the government highway security.
Right.
Anything else, of course, you know, any undercover work, we'll be well aware of what's, what's going on, you know?
The only question I would have, everything looks good as far as if they're participating with our agencies. Do we need to put anything in there to let them know that they need to follow by our guidelines as far as our camera, body camera, and the car camera? Would that be something that we would need to put in there? In other words, you're going over there at their request, but it doesn't really give you the authority or the ability to?
I believe paragraph five, was it not, Jesse, from Wood? Paragraph five.
Is that one of those up on the board now?
Yeah, yeah, there you go.
We'd have to.
While on duty, it says that, but the officer shall, for personnel and administrative purposes, remain under the control of the officer's own agency, including purposes of pay.
I think that's.
I believe that.
I think that encompasses.
I'm gonna agree with the mayor and say I think that's sufficient, because it says, first line is, shall be subject to lawful operational commands the officer's superior. So, you know, whatever protocol's in place with the agency you're in applies. If it came up and there were a specific issue, we could always amend existing agreements or have a special agreement if, you know, something specific with body cams or something like that came up.
But like I said, most of the time, it's gonna be those traffic checks and stuff. And you want to make sure they're, even though they're over there, wherever they're at, they're, they'll operate those cameras wherever they're at.
Well, yes, sir. Our guys will, hopefully we'll be getting those soon. We're waiting on the federal money to be given to the state. We're still limited on what we have.
Now, Mr. McQueen, just one thing I want to point out is the way this is written, and this is how I'd recommend we keep it, the officer for operation purposes follows the directions of the superior officer in the agency they're working in. So they're still our employee, but so if, and I don't know what Rockingham's policy is, but say they don't have a body cam policy or something like that, I think we'd follow their policy when one of our guys is working over there, and vice versa when they're here.
Yes.
Any further questions, gentlemen? If not, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. At this time, we are going to work on ordinance amending the city of Hamlet's code ordinances, Chapter 5 Buildings Regarding the Adopting a Minimum Housing Code, and at this time, we will open a public hearing on this amendment. Do we have anyone here tonight in the audience that wanted to make a comment? Did you have any comments, Mr. Abernathy?
No, a public hearing's required to amend the ordinance. This will just help staff enforce minimal housing for dilapidated structures.
Our attorney may have a few other comments, though.
Yeah, the only thing I would add, this came up when Gail asked me to assist with the matter, and it's basically, there's a gap in our ordinance. We've got language that covers non-residential buildings, we have language that covers abandoned houses, but we don't have anything for occupied structures, and that's a situation that we're facing, so before Gail can really do anything else, we, we needed to fill that in with a, with a minimum housing code.
Or subject, or, or properties that can be rented, too. I mean, in other words, they've got to meet a minimum code.
Well, that's right. So it's, it's both owner occupied and tenant occupied, and actually, in my experience, it's most often rental properties where you see the home housing code being applied to occupied structures.
Pretty restrictive, though, in what you can consider minimum living standards, correct?
That's right. And I mean, if Gail wants to jump in, she can, but it's, it's not like, you know.
Heat, running water's about it.
It's heat, running water, I mean, it has to be habitable, so, you know, if it's unsafe, then you're not gonna be able, you're not gonna be able to give them that condition. But you're right, I mean, they're not regulating aesthetics, they're not regulating the size of the building and things like that.
They're not even, I wrote in their insect control either.
Um, I think if it were bad enough, you could apply it, but it's not a, I mean, if someone sees a single, a single vermin or something, I think.
No, but I mean.
Right. I think you could if it were bad enough, but that's, it's not explicit.
Okay. Does anyone else have any comments on it? If not, we'll close as a public hearing at this time. We'll move along to item number 10, which is consideration of the amendment to the ordinance, Chapter 5 Buildings Regarding the Minimum Housing Code. Do I have a motion on?
So moved.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Any further comments? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I have before us at this time, gentlemen, the, uh... Okay, we have before us a, a updated rotunda lease at the depot. You have comments on that, Mr. Abernathy?
These were just recommendations made by the League of Municipalities after a meeting with them. They are our insurance carrier. The depot rental agreement used to just allow, or just require that an insured caterer or leasy provide insurance in the amount of $1 million. That's upheld, but the updated draft has a subject, has requirements for all caterers to have at least $1 million general liability to cover any illness from food, but the leasy must have general liability event insurance in the amount of $1 million as well. All of this information, all this insurance can be purchased by the leasy, or it can be obtained on their homeowner's insurance. That's one thing that we learned, and that is one option for our lessees that could make it much more affordable for them. An insurance certificate naming the city as an additional insured person must be, an insurance certificate naming the city as an additional insured entity is also required, and alcoholic beverages may be served by an appropriately licensed caterer.
I would, I'd recommend that we put that the caterer submits, or we have on file a current ABC permit to show that they're, that they're current, and that they have been issued that permit, received, and in getting that, you, you know they've received training as far as responsible sales and service. I think that would be not too much heartburn. They could file it once a year, you know, I don't have to do it every time, as long as we've got one on file. Because if not, I mean, according to our, according to our lease agreement here, there's no alcohol at all unless it's a caterer providing it, and that caterer has, I can't go down there and rent it and have beer. Is that, is that, is that correct? The way our, the way it's written right now, does it have to be a caterer providing it? Follow them circumstances, conditions with the leasy accepts, without, except, must have a licensed and insured right below that?
I think that's currently allowed as is, but I'm gonna call Ms. Strickland up to clarify.
If you look at item four, I believe it is, alcoholic beverages may be used by the lessy only under the following circumstances, may be served by an appropriately licensed and insured caterer, or lessy must include alcohol liability on the event insurance. And when you apply for the event insurance, that is a question that they ask, and so when we get that certificate, it would say that they are, the certificate will state that they're aware that they're serving alcohol there.
Now, do we differentiate different types of alcohol because if it's, if it's?
It only says.
I think it goes on.
Beer and wine. Only beer and wines allowed.
Right. It goes on to say that further that, um...
Just scroll down a little bit, Mark.
B, subsection B.
Beer and non-fortified wine.
Yeah, only beer and non-fortified wine will be allowed, hard spirits or cash bars are strictly prohibited. Ground bag is prohibited as well.
Okay. And do we, and I've never paid attention that far down, do we address the people that have fundraisers and wanting to sell alcohol? Is that in here at all?
I don't think I've had an instance of that.
But you can get a one-time permit to, for a political party, for a nonprofit group. Somebody's liable to, to approach and want to do that.
Well, if so, they would have to have the insurance for the caterer, or they would have to have the event insurance.
Those hard spirits or cash bars are strictly prohibited.
Okay. But, oh, well, I guess that's a catch-all for anybody who wants to do it.
Right.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Not. I still like the idea of a current red license on file.
Well, we require that for the insurance policy. We always have for the insurance policy, so we can just continue to do so along with the ABC permit.
And they're renewed yearly now.
Yes, yes. Anytime someone's going to rent, when they list their caterer, I check to make sure that we have a current insurance on file. If not, then we request it.
That's our ABC license.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to approve the lease agreement?
So moved.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Moving along to item number 12, which you have before you is our monthly tax releases for the month of November. And you can see what those are. Total amount of taxes that are refunded are eight forty, $840.53, and most of it sold either vehicle errors or vehicles sold.
I see any issues with it. So moved to approve.
Motion to approve, second from Councilman Lewis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving along to item number 12, Discussion of Retire Insurance Benefits. Mr. Martin, I believe you had some question on this and some information, would you like to?
Well, I think it's, uh...
Tell us what the problem is and what we need to do.
Well, the, the present policy, as it's written, indicates that a city employee must, must have 25 executive years' service with the city before they will pay their 100% insurance benefit. The question was, could a person with 24 years' service, could they take their vacation time, sick days, holidays, whatever they got built up, to apply to that 25-year rule? And that's what, that's what the discussion is about.
So you're saying at this time, they can't use that as far as medical?
Well, no, they can't use it to add to the 25 years. The years of service. Requirement. Now, it's my opinion that if they've got 25 years plus, and they've got X number of days built up that would, that would give them the extra year to qualify for the 25, that seems to be fair and the right thing to do, to allow them to be able to do that.
Has there been a case, has there been a case where, where it wasn't allowed? I didn't, I'm...
I don't know.
Oh, okay.
This is, I've never...
Okay.
This is a benefit that's offered by the city, so it's a local benefit, it's entirely up to the council to determine and define, and what the city does is it pays insurance premiums for retirees based on their years of service. As you can see on the chart above, for example, for an employee with 10 to 15 years of, of service, the city will pay 25% of the retiree's premium. For an employee who has served for 25 years or more, the city will pay 100% of that premium. And the current policy does not allow, or it does not calculate an employee's accumulated sick leave into the calculation when determining how much, what the percentage will be as far as what the city will pay in terms of the retiree insurance premium. So approving this amendment would mean that the city would consider retirees or an employee's accumulated sick leave when they retire as years of service when calculating or when determining how many years of service they have. A few other requirements worth noting is that the employees must retire under the provision set forth under the retirement system. That means that they have to retire... provisions set forth under the retirement system. That means that they have to retire and quote-unquote retire. They can't go and work for another municipality, and, you know, we're not gonna pay their insurance if they're going to work for another municipality, which is going to pay their insurance premium already as a full-time employee. They have to retire under the provisions and the requirements set forth in the retirement system.
All right, can I, yeah, can I ask one question here while we're on it? Always bothers me. What about our police officers?
Twenty years. They get their medical benefits, don't they?
They're subject to this.
I mean, that could leave, that could leave, uh, that could leave the fleet, we've run in, I've seen this in some other cities, that leaves your police officers without, uh, health insurance until they turn age sixty-two.
Mr. Mayor, the police, police officers are under a special separation allowance, but, but this does not apply. That, that...
Okay, well, okay, we'll talk about that.
That's fire department too, don't they?
Yeah, fire department.
Police and fire.
So essentially...
And with this, we're talking about a cap of, talking about a cap of a year, um, and we're talking about twenty-four years of service to the city of Hamlet.
It's not like they can bring their retirement years they've got in somewhere else and bring it here and qualify for our sick time. They have got to work for us.
Yeah.
They've gotta work for us.
Twenty-four consecutive years with the city of Hamlet.
Yeah.
Really, the only thing that it's doing...
Twenty-five, but I like what you're saying. Yeah, I think that ought to count.
The, the only thing that it's doing really is it's allowing somebody to scat the days, to use those towards this. They would stay here anyway, so it's a cost-saving measure. Essentially, it's not buying them out, but they're gonna go ahead and leave with their days that they have. We're gonna count that as service. It entices the employee to stay here, so it's a way to retain folks. And then on the flip side, you're gonna bring somebody in making less money, so it's gonna be a cost-saving, uh, measure as well. Um, I, I'd like to go ahead and say we'll go ahead and approve this.
The language as is, I'm sorry to interrupt, but the language as is does not have any cap, which means they could use as much sick time as they wanted to. If, if they had, um, the equivalent of a year and a half, um, of sick leave under the provisions of the retirement system built up, uh, then they could use that full year and a half, so if you wanted...
We're gonna say up to a year.
Yeah.
Well, it's...
Well, I mean, if you think about...
A year and a half.
Let's look at it this way. Do we, we don't, we don't grow sick time every, uh, length of service. There's always eight hours a month, or whatever it is for the police and fire, right? It doesn't grow. So an eight-hour employee theoretically is gonna have twenty-four hundred hours of sick time. It takes twenty-eighty, two thousand and eighty hours to make a year of credible service, so you're only looking at a year and a quarter for most people.
Yeah.
A year and a quarter, a year and a third that you would cash in.
That's very accurate.
You, you get them off, you, you get them retired. I mean, and, and, and I think sick time service is, is as good as, 'cause that tells me that they weren't out during that time and out injured.
It's a reward.
You and I got it through the state.
Well, yeah, but, but when we went on there, you only had to have five years to get a full insurance, but I, I, I agree with it completely.
Okay.
Tells me it's an employee that's, that has been healthy, is what it tells me.
What would be the difference in that employee taking, okay, I'm gonna take a year off?
Six.
I mean, same difference.
Oh, different, this would actually save the money.
Would this be, uh, something we could approve with the amendment in there stating that it's a cap of a year and twenty-four years of service?
That's what the manager was just asking. You all can make that approval, or that amendment here tonight, that'll be fine.
I would trap it what twenty-five years would be.
I make a, uh, motion to approve, um, this as presented with the amendment, uh, that would include a year cap and the twenty-four years of service with the city of Hamlet.
Second.
Continuous.
So it'll be a little more than that, Jonathan, for like policemen and, and firemen, 'cause they generate a little bit higher sick amount. See what I'm saying?
Well, but I think that we were talking about this has nothing to do with them.
This don't have nothing to do with fire.
Mr. Morphers has a comment.
And, and two things. One, I just wanted to make sure we were clear on your amendment, so this would only apply to people with a, a minimum of twenty-four years. So, you know, if you're in one of these other categories, twenty to twenty-five, fifteen to twenty, you wouldn't be able to, quote, top off.
That's right.
Okay. Um, other question, as I read this, this applies to all employees, um, fire and police included. Uh, police often retire after twenty years, but to receive that full hundred percent benefit, they'd have to work the twenty-five, just like anybody else.
That would be their decision.
That was my question, because...
Well, that would be their decision to retire at twenty years, and even their benefits are gonna be able to reduce.
Well, and, and less than twen, and less than that twenty-five or twenty-four number, seventy-five percent, they gotta pay.
They're not even, they're not even close to that.
That's right. That's exactly right.
And we actually, if you think back, several months ago, we actually took steps to make sure people don't bank and save a lot of this time to where somebody would come to you wanting to do two or three years, it would be, you know, one year's about all they're gonna be able to get anyway. So this is a cost-saving measure for the city.
True sick time should be true sick time to the retirement system, 'cause if not, we're undermining what the retirement system has established, if we, if we submit more. And I know it's up to us what we submit, but, you know, we've talked about this before. True sick hours should go towards, and we should've been paying all these other times.
Um, so, Mr. Morphers, what we have on, the motion on the floor, the amendment made, we're good, and that covers...
And I'm just gonna reread the amendment. So, as proposed, it would be, uh, retiring employees accrued sick leave will be included, uh, in calculating years of credible service to determine the percentage of retiree health insurance premiums paid by the city, comma, provided that the employee must have twenty-four years of creditable service, and may use, um, up to a maximum of one year of accrued sick leave. Is that correct?
What did you have?
I was just going to make the recommendation that you consider removing the requirement that they have more than twenty-four years, 'cause that's somewhat restrictive for the employee who has been here fifteen to twenty years or ten to fifteen years. Just let them use up to a, a year of sick leave.
Twenty-four years, that's the number you ought to use. That's how many hours it would be.
Mr. Morphers, you used the term credible service.
Creditable. Um, they, they said...
We're talking about consecutive time, twenty-four years consecutively.
With the city of Hamlet.
That's right.
With the city of Hamlet.
Yes, sir.
Incredible service includes sick time under the provision set forth by the retirement system.
And to answer your question, Mr. Martin, that's required, uh, elsewhere in this, this ordinance. Um, it already says that you have to earn these hours with the city of Hamlet.
That's ninety-six hours, eight hours a month, times twelve.
At one point, I just wanted to tell them what the manager was thinking about policemen who opt to retire after twenty years. It seems like you're gonna run into a situation where you have a number of policemen who may wanna retire at twenty or nineteen and a half, but this benefit would not be, or this, this extra six-time allowance wouldn't be available to them.
It's only twenty-five.
So maybe, like Marcus was saying, you wanna drop the twenty-four-year, uh, service requirement. That makes sense.
We're looking at three days, so I think reasonable. One year is reasonable.
Well...
They are, they're under law enforcement.
We're talking about... What, what policemen have, uh, by state statute, is they have a special separation allowance, which is, I'm sure you're very familiar with, Mr. Martin. I think it's for five years, they get an extra payment.
Twenty-five point five percent of their base pay at their last paycheck.
And so what we're saying is, is that they get that after twenty years, but for purposes of this, they calculate their years the same way as any other employee. So, a fireman, or, excuse me, policeman retires at twenty years is eligible for, um, the seventy-five percent bracket rather than the hundred percent bracket. That's all I'm saying.
Their retirement would be seventy-five percent.
Somebody threw out twenty, and twenties, twenties is not a retirement for it. It's, it's, you're, you're gonna get a multiplier of twenty years versus a full thirty-year retirement. Yeah. It really don't affect this at all.
Okay. All right, we got the motion on the floor. Need a second? All right, go right ahead. Right.
Yep.
As amended, sir.
For health, for health benefits. Yep. That's what I...
And, and retirement.
Yeah, retirement too, but we're...
Yeah.
That's a done deal. State already accepts that. We're, now we're talking about our, our per, our internal.
That's right.
I'm sorry, sir. Yes, sir. So this is, and Marcus said this at the beginning of his presentation, this is a purely local benefit. This is something the city of Hamlet offers, so we can structure however we want. This doesn't affect your, your, uh, benefits under the local government retirement system or social security, any of that stuff. It's just this local benefit. That's right. Yes, sir.
Twenty-four's enough.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Mayor, is that, is that extra, one thing?
Audience, pardon us. I got a quarter of a battery. I'm good. Are we okay back?
I have nothing, but I can be loud.
Okay. Next, next item of business is item number fourteen, which is, uh, Veterans Day Proclamation. And, uh, I, as a veteran, I'm proud to be able to sign this, uh, proclamation. Whereas the veterans of our community have served our country during peace and war and have kept our democracy safe, and whereas November the eleventh is designated and set aside to honor all those who fought, died, and became disabled while defending this nation, and whereas it is fitting that a period of time be set aside to honor and show respect to these great men and women, now therefore I, Bill Bayless, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Hamlet, do hereby urge all citizens in our community to reflect on the democratic freedom and recognize the great contribution that veterans have made possible for each of us by paying tribute on November the eleventh, twenty fifteen. In witness hereof, I have herein two set my hand and cause the affixed, the official seal of the city of Hamlet. Need a motion? No, that one, that's a proclamation. Uh, the next item of business is also a, a proclamation from the mayor, Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month. Whereas Alzheimer's is a progressive degenerative disease that affects over five million people in the United States and their families, and whereas Alzheimer's disease causes deterioration of memory and thinking and erodes judgment and reasoning abilities, it also affects behavior, emotions, and the ability to care for oneself. And whereas there is no cure for Alzheimer's disease, and whereas according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, Alzheimer's is the sixth-leading cause of death for American adults and the fifth-leading cause of death in adults aged sixty-five and older. And whereas the city of Hamlet joins individuals, families, friends, and caregivers dealing with the effects of Alzheimer's disease and promoting research to find a cause and cure, and in supporting educational programs and support services. And now therefore I, Bill Bayless, mayor of the city of Hamlet, do hereby proclaim November twenty fifteen as Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month and commend its observance to all citizens. In witness hereof, I have set my hand this tenth day of November twenty fifteen and caused this seal to be affixed. Next item of business, we have with us tonight Mrs. Ellen Morrison, and I have a proclamation tonight from the city of Hamlet, North Carolina, ninetieth birthday for Ella Louise Sledge Morrison. Whereas Ella Louise Sledge Morrison of Five Nineteen Charlotte Street in Hamlet was blessed to celebrate her ninetieth birthday on November the seventh of twenty fifteen. And whereas Ella Louise Sledge Morrison was born in Roanoke, Virginia, on November the seventh of nineteen twenty-five, where she lived until a young age, and her family made the move to the city of Hamlet where she spent the majority of her life. And whereas Ella Louise Sledge Morrison attended Capital Highway School in Hamlet, where she graduated as a valedictorian in nineteen forty-three, and moved to the Norfolk Plymouth, Virginia region for a brief stay and return to Hamlet. And whereas Ella Louise Sledge Morrison was married to the late Willie Nathaniel Morrison, senior, who worked for the railroad as a barber and was a World War II veteran, they are the proud parents of five children, five grandchildren, thirteen great-grandchildren, and one great-great-grandchild. And whereas Ella Louise Sledge Morrison is a member of Saint Stephen's AME Zion Church in Hamlet, where she has served on the Board of Trustees, now therefore the mayor of Ha, the mayor and Hamlet City Council to hereby proclaim its congratulations on the event of Ms. Morrison's ninetieth birthday, and urges the city of Hamlet to pay special tribute to this special member of our community. I thought I had another. There it is. Says sign here. Ms. Morrison, if you could come up?
Do you mind coming up? I'm making sick. You don't look at that.
Seventy-three, seventy-four.
Seven, eight, I'm almost eighty-eight.
Okay, this time, under other business, we'll move to item seventeen, departmental reports. Police chief, you have anything for us tonight? Where are we as far as an officer at RCC? Are we? Okay. Police chief?
Calvin, I was gonna say the, the, the brush truck saw it on Seaboard Festival. They have, looks sharp. Looks really good.
It does, it looks great.
Is that, is that internal? You guys doing it?
Mm-hmm.
Wow, that is, now that tank that's on there, is that about as big a tank you could put on it based on weight restrictions and, okay. And that's about a thousand or five hundred?
Fifteen hundred.
Okay.
It looks really good.
And our new, uh, vehicles in service at the police department, too.
Mr. Garner, you got anything for us tonight? Okay. Ms. Brown. Ms. Strickland. Thank you. Jill? Nothing? Okay, Tammy? Correspondence from nineteen seventy-one?
How did you destroy, uh, those documents? So they, they recycle it? What about, uh, police department reports? Is that something that, that you?
City manager.
I just wanted to, uh, make another reminder that city offices will be closed tomorrow for Veterans Day. We've altered our garbage schedule, and all of tomorrow's garbage will be collected on Thursday. We've also altered our schedule for Thanksgiving. We've also altered our schedule for Thanksgiving. For Thursday and Friday, November twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, all residential and commercial garbage will be collected on the Wednesday before, which is November twenty-fifth. So if your garbage is normally collected on Thursday or Friday, it will be, it will come on Wednesday. Basketball registration has started. It's thirty-five dollars per child and parents can sign up their children here at City Hall. The registration will end on Thursday, December third. We normally end it on Friday, but, but we're having an employee appreciation event on that Friday. So we're ending it on Thursday, the third, and late registration will begin Monday, the seventh, and go through the eleventh. That's all I have, um, to report.
Is that information on our Facebook page?
Yes.
Good.
Is there, um, we've talked about this before. We need to find a better way to get this type of information out. Hence the reason we had to extend football. Not everyone gets the Daily Journal. Not everyone looks on Facebook. Not everyone tags it, shares it, and all that to get it out there, and not everyone's on our page. You know, I, I think we need to look at in the future some way of, um, you know, I even spoke to Maurice about an LED-like, um, sign that's like on, you know, at one of the parks, Memorial Park or somewhere that people ride by constantly. And just like the RCC board, it would, you know, highlight that information.
Right here.
That would be not, you know, here, but somewhere where the traffic is there and people will see it so that we can get, I think our registration, we would get more participation if people were aware of it. Cause that's every season I hear it. And although the seasons do not change, people just, you know, there's a lot of things, a lot of things going on, people forget. And I hear, you know, I missed a deadline. And that's, you know, I think we just need to find a better way.
That leads me to a question about football. How many tackle teams did we, I've heard something that I really didn't like hearing the other day, that we combined our both ages, ten, eleven, eleven, twelve tackle together. Is that true?
Yes, it is true because one of the age groups, we were, we were only able to get about twenty-four or twenty-five. And we were looking at either canceling, canceling it, having one team of maybe not enough players. We, you know, the Parks and Rec director and I discussed this thoroughly and he discussed it with all of the coaches. And at the end of the day, they just decided rather than turn twenty-five people away, we would, you know, just turn five or six, which is what we normally do because of the weight limit.
If we're only, if we're only fielding tw- uh, four teams, we used to field about eight teams. So we've off, we're off that much on both, we're off on both age groups, it sounds like.
There is another league that has started up and we suspect that some of those folks may have gone to that other.
They just concluded, I talked with their coordinator, they just concluded their season and we started ours, so it was an overlap, so they couldn't sign up and play. However, they're looking at doubling next year. They're looking at doubling that travel team. We might, and I, I sure hope this is not the case because we provided football when nobody else did. And this is, you know, it, it came on, we, we, I guess we started in two or three, somewhere there. And we, we're the only, when nobody else would provide football, a football program, we did. And, and we might be agent, we might be near the end of our football, rec football. I mean, I hope that's not the case, but you'll have some decisions to make on that, what's best, you know, the best. But maybe, maybe they can come here and play and use our facilities or something, I don't know.
You'd add, we have to start our program a little later.
But what I don't like, it's not that I don't like it, the talent and all that they, that they go up against is great and it's good for the players, but there's a lot of the players that can't afford to go and travel to Raleigh, to Durham, Charlotte, and families to go watch them to play a game. That's what's gonna, that's what's gonna hurt these kids that are sitting at home not getting an opportunity to play football. I, I, I thought that the whole time when I heard what this league was coming, that's great. And, and some of these kids will get to go play and maybe they'll have scholarships for them, but there's a lot of talent that doesn't even get a chance to get out, that might not get a chance to get out and play. And I hope that we can hang on to our football, but I'm scared it's, it could go by the wayside in a year or two.
If we had a low count in a future year, one thing that we could do was what we considered try, or what we tried to do this year, which was, um, before consolidating the eleven and twelve-year-olds, we thought, well, maybe our teams can play their teams. Uh, the, the travel leagues, uh, over at the ninth grade academy. And, uh, it's just the, the scheduling conflicted too much, but, uh.
Therein lies an issue. We, we got beat up because of our schedule started. We wouldn't even have started now in football yet. We'd be practicing, they've already, they're already two weeks into their season. We wouldn't have our first game till here just before Thanksgiving and it'd be really cold. But, but if we wait for them to finish and give two weeks for those players to come play rec ball, we're gonna be right back in the situation of playing football in December and nights where it might be twenty degrees out there and parents aren't gonna be happy and understand that. So we've got a challenge coming up for, for youth football. Either we're gonna get completely out of it, uh, and not, and, and some kids are gonna get overlooked. There's some kids that'll be playing, I know on Friday nights, it's not gonna get to play on a travel, on a travel team because they don't have the money to go. And it's expensive to go to a game for a day and, and feed, you know, three or four family members. And, and then they've got special uniforms and they, t-shirts and hoodies and outfits, warm-up suits. I mean, it gets expensive and same way with baseball. Our baseball, I mean, I'm, I'm sure he could tell us, our baseball's hurting because of all the travel teams now. So that's just some challenges coming up, I think, for all Parks and Recs. I just, just near and dear to me because we offered something when they didn't have it. And, and I've seen a lot of players, and there's two in the pros that played Hamlet rec ball that are playing right now that's playing pro football, and they played right down there under those lights. And that's, we all ought to be proud of that. I mean, they're prime-time players, too. I mean, they're, they're impact players in the league. They started right down here.
As far as I'm concerned, as long as our citizens want it, we will do our best to provide it.
I hope we can. I hope we can. I don't wanna go against the travel, I just want it, I just, maybe we can come to something on scheduling and where to work, so.
Anything else, Mr. Abada?
Yes, sir.
No? No? Okay. All right, this time we'll move along with comments, council, or Councilman Pressler.
Only to say that we've already talked about the Seaboard Festival, the success it was, and I wanna thank the employees for having it cleaned up and looking good within, well, by midnight, it looked like it was about brand-new. I did see some people cooking with grease. And, I mean, that's a, that's a saying, cooking with grease, now you're cooking with grease. But they were cooking with grease on our sidewalks. And I don't know if that ended up some residual, uh, mess down there near the theater and all. I saw some right there cooking with fryers right on the sidewalks and, and, yeah, I was worried about that. I don't know if that ended up being a problem or not, but we've got to be careful with that. These, sometimes these folks don't, don't think about it and they'll pour that grease right down a storm drain. And, and that, just the problems that we have with that. But, but I commend our staff and all our employees for, for making, making it look like Main Street, just like that. And all, and the LED lights, I'm, I don't know if I'm the only one that loves them, but gosh, they're thirty percent brighter in my neighborhood. And I, and I love the LED lights.
They look really good.
Or that, that Duke's been putting up.
Every single street light in Hamlet, but for some of these, the technology just hasn't got there or it's not gotten, um, at a, a level of profitability for Duke, uh, just yet. But we've got LEDs in the majority of our streetlights, which I'm really, uh, proud of and, uh.
So Hamlet Avenue, that business and Main Street business, is that ever gonna be an option to have LED lights down there? With the way those lights are wired?
You know, I don't know the answer to that, but they reached out to me just a week or so ago wanting to schedule a meeting sometime in the next four to five weeks to discuss what our options are because our citizens has, have been voicing concerns about.
It's not very bright on either street. And I, we've got business owners here, I'm, Hamlet Avenue especially is dark, dark, at night it's dark.
We've, we've rece, we've been receiving complaints, uh, in addition to the, the bulbs, but the, the chip paint on the poles themselves. And they've been doing some research and they've got three or four options. Um, and they wanna meet with us at some point to, uh, determine what the best course of action would be, so.
Okay. That's all I have, thank you.
That's on the, on Hamlet Avenue?
Yes.
It's taken some months to figure that out.
Parts of Raleigh Street and parts of Maine.
How many months does it take to figure out that, what you're gonna do?
They painted them last time, it was two thousand and two, I think, one or two.
Somewhere along there, it's been a while.
I mean, I, I think we discussed this like three or four months ago.
They probably wanna replace the poles, the technology in them poles is probably too expensive to, to update the LED. And I, that's probably where they're going. What, is that what they're wanting to do, sounds like?
I don't know. I've asked probably five or ten times, you know, af- after a month of waiting and not hearing, you know, I ask again, so.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Quinn?
Just one quick question to you before I start, Marcus. Tell me what you're talking about with merging the, the two football pro, did, I've not heard anything about that.
So, um, with our, um, with our, um, our Parks and Rec program, we have two age groups. A nine and ten-year-old group and an eleven and twelve-year-old group. And, um, once we got through the registration period, we realized that the eleven and twelve-year-olds, only about twenty or maybe not even twenty-five had signed up. So what we first decided to do was extend the registration period, which is something we never do, just to try to get enough tackle football players. We, uh, extended that an additional week. And our Parks and Rec director went as far as going to schools on foot and handed out, handing out flyers to try to get some more participation. Um, and at the end of that week, we still didn't have enough to form two teams. So we were looking at the eleven and twelve-year-old football program, only having one team at best. There is, there's another travel team that has just started and we first thought, well, maybe our team can play the travel team over at the ninth grade academy. Schedule's conflicted and that didn't work out. And, um, you know, then, you know, we got to thinking, well, the teams can't play, you know, one team can't play itself. But so what we decided to do was merge the nine and ten-year-olds and the eleven and twelve-year-olds into one league. And we adopted the nine and ten-year-old weight limit. Um, and, uh, which was, uh, go ahead.
Really?
Yes, so that.
Already very restrictive now for twelv- some twelve-year-olds to get, twelve-year-olds to get to play.
Just because we don't want.
Yeah, I know the injury part, but.
We don't want, you know, a hundred and fifty-pound athlete playing a seventy-five-pound athlete.
No, I don't either, I'm just saying, but the, the restrictions, I didn't know we did that. And I was wondering if we limited ball carriers to certain weights or, or.
There were limitations based on position.
I'm just gonna tell you, it might not be popular, but I am definitely not for that. And I wished we would've known about this before you did that. There is a distinct difference between a nine-year-old and a twelve-year-old. I have seen the, the games down there and the speed those kids play it at twelve compared to nine. I'm mighty afraid someone's gonna get hurt in that situation. I don't like that at all.
That's why we lowered the weight restriction.
I don't care if you lowered the weight restriction, I'm talking about speed. Are we training our coaches on any of the, uh, row to crawl, heads-up football, things of that nature?
We were, I know we were, cause I was coaching.
Are, are we now?
I can find out and get you that.
I mean, I've seen kids down there playing in pool shoes where they would be under the weight, just by the weight of the cleats. That's my opinion. I, I'm not a fan of that whatsoever at all. The difference between a twelve-year-old and a nine-year-old and it's not the same as the difference between a seventeen-year-old and a fifteen-year-old. The speed of that game is dangerous. And at some point, I think that rests on this, on the, on, on this board. That's, that's just, that's my opinion there. I don't like that at all.
I would restrict ball carriers to, uh, I would restrict the ball carriers to, to, you know, you can't have the max weight twelve-year-old carrying the ball because it's, it, I mean, we're getting technical here. This is probably something that we shouldn't go too far into, but I, I know exactly what he's saying because when I used to see nine-year-olds playing and, and I'd stay for the eleven and twelve, it was like, I mean, it was unreal, the difference in, in the performance and, and the speed these kids have and how they hit and, and all. So we, uh, uh, I didn't know we did that.
The most important thing was to get the weight correct because there are plenty of nine-year-olds that weigh a hundred and twenty pounds, but then there's twelve-year-olds that weigh ninety. So, um.
In whose opinion was that the most important thing, though? In whose opinion was that the most important thing, to get the weight now? I'm saying the speed of the game is as much of an issue than it would be the weight.
And you can go the other route, too. There's kids out here that doesn't make the weight, but if you restrict them to be on a lineman, they'd love it and they wouldn't hurt nobody, they'd just be a lineman. So we're, I mean, we're getting into the, into the, way down into the, the meat here.
Oh, I understand that, but I just, to hear from it from, from you in the meat, and I didn't have any idea that was going on.
I didn't know the weight had been changed, that's first I heard. And I hope they restricted the ball handling to, you know.
We definitely need to look at that. That's, uh, something you, you need to get with Maurice and look at that. And find out if we're training our coaches on that heads-up program. Cause if you're not, they're looking at the concussion issue, not just in the NFL, they're looking at it everywhere down the line.
That's correct. We, we, three years ago, when it came out, it was actually mandated to be sponsored by the league that, that sort of represent, that we belong to. And we went through a week of conditioning and, and heads-up tackling. Now, it, I haven't been down there for games this year, my, my son aged out. So I don't know if it was taught in their pre-camp, but it was being taught as far as how you, how you tackle and everything. So it is a big liability anyway, it's a risk any way you do it, but, you know, we.
And we're saying that it is a risk because you'd actually reduce the weight. So we know there's a risk there, so just look into it, you and Maurice. Uh, you have.
I don't have one here.
Yeah, I didn't even have that until I just heard it from Pat, so I wanted to bring that up. Um, dogs barking. We've looked at some of the, uh, policies that we've had and some of the ordinances on the books. And we've did a good job over the past couple of years of updating these things and changing them. I've had several folks, um, saying there's issues with dogs barking, things like that. You know, there's very little you can do in terms of handling those situations. However, um, what is a minor call to some people is a major annoyance to others. You would pull that out and you and Scott get together and see if there's any meat we can put in our ordinance that would allow some sort of, um, penalty for dogs barking other than our normal, everyday, run-of-the-mill noise ordinance violations. Because I think the way it's been handled for years is they've handled the, the dog issues under the noise ordinance situation. And with us starting into the dog business like we did, um, through no effort or thought of our own, I think more people are calling us, I know they're calling me, about the issues. And, um, you know, it's just one of those things that, I think we can update that and do a little better job of that. Put a little meat in that and get them in the pocketbook, they'll, they'll do something about it. Also, seems like every month, I bring two, two or three more visitors with us. In, uh, being the scout master for troop five twenty-seven, we've got several badges that we've been doing. And inevitably, I've talked to the mayor, it seems like every time you do one of those badges, inevitably they got to come to a meeting of some kind. And, um, they choose to come here and I'm proud to say that. So tonight, if you would just stand up, Lee and Trey, these young men are working on their citizenship and their community badge. And, uh, they're here for. They're here for a part of, uh, part of that badge is to come to this meeting and listen to us, conduct business, so.
And working toward their Eagle.
And working towards their Eagle Scouts. At this moment, we've got two actively working on their Eagle. One just received his Eagle badge and probably three more that within the next six to eight months will have that. So, um, I think that's it. I'm gonna be honest with you, I thought there was one more thing and I didn't make it home in time to get my note. So if I have something else, Mayor, if you would let me. But I'm, I'm trying to think, old age has got me here.
Mr. Close.
I'd like to thank the veterans, all those that served, I'd like to thank them again. Also like to thank the next and all the Seaboard volunteers for all the work they've done. Somebody mentioned about grease on the sidewalk. We would cut through the grease. And one thing we've done, and they required this in Lexington, was we had to put down cardboard. And there was some people beside us that didn't have down cardboard. And I told Miranda so she could take a look at that. But I think that's something that they probably need to do is to require them to put down cardboard. Uh, I think the Christmas tree lighting is the first, first, when is, please?
November.
November the thirtieth, nobody mentioned that, but the Christmas tree lighting down at Depot Park, November the thirtieth. Also, uh, Christmas, and the old-fashioned Christmas in Hamlet is eleventh and the twelfth of December. twelfth of December. Uh, the eleventh on Hamlet Avenue and the twelfth over here on Main Street. Uh, and I appreciate all the hard work, the employees and everyone's done. Uh, Marcus, I appreciate the hard work that you and Maurice are doing, I understand, there's a lot of consequences and things like that, but I appreciate what you're trying to do to your kids, so I understand that, but, you know, and it is, it is, it's twenty-two hundred. Uh, thank you, thank you for all the hard work. And I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Close. Mr. Martin?
Uh, well, there's nothing been mentioned yet about Thanksgiving. Uh, we won't meet again until after Thanksgiving, of course, so I would just like to, uh, remind everybody, have a nice holiday, safe, enjoy. Other than that, that's all.
Mr. Bowie?
Um, I'll just kinda echo what everyone said. Seaboard Festival, that was, uh, it turned out to be a really great event. Um, I wanna thank the veterans for Veterans Day, Bill, that's to you as well, sir, appreciate what you, what you've done.
And Pat.
And, uh, Pat and Eddie, uh, we've got some up here as well with us. Um, the parade is December tenth, starts at three-thirty. If you want a good spot, uh, would come earlier. The registration forms to be in the parade, you can find them on the city website. They're also at BB and T and here at City Hall. Am I missing any other locations where you can get a registration form? Is that it? Right? Okay. All right. Um, also, I wanna point out the, uh, you know, we appreciate everyone coming out, that did come out for the recent, uh, elections. Turned out, I think, could've been better, but, you know, again, kind of, uh, the weather and, and all kept some people in. Um, something else I wanna talk about is, um, you know, I, we recognize people in the city of Hamlet, and, and I just got something here, uh, and I've thought about whether I wanted to or not, 'cause there's, uh, someone close to me that, um, I'm gonna be mentioning, but we recently had, uh, two of our Hamlet Middle School cross-country, um, pl, uh, members, or, um, this is something just started up in the middle school, so it's a new program, but two of the, uh, runners were asked to do an interview at Coach's Corner at Patton's Grill in, in Rockingham recently, and the school board liked it enough to invite them to the school board meeting last night. Um, so I just wanted to recognize them tonight, and of course, one is Joey Nicholson for the boys', uh, team, and then the other's my daughter Emily Bowie, who, um, they both are leading and have won all the races so far, so it's a really good representation of Hamlet. I didn't wanna do that, 'cause it's my child, but at the same time, you know, no matter who it is, uh, you know, Hamlet's near and dear to me, so anybody that does something and, and we're recognized for it, I think we need to know about it. And if they're recognized at the school board meeting, then they're gonna be recognized at our meeting. So we, I just wanna thank them for what they're doing. Uh, I can't keep up with her, so, and I don't know where she got it from, but anyway, she can do it. So that's really all I have, uh, to add. I, I, we've covered pretty much everything else. Um, the basketball sign, you know, we'll, we'll have to work on that as the budget comes up for next year, so that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, everybody.
I want to wish everybody a wonderful Thanksgiving. I graciously appreciate all the work the city employees do. There's so many things that they do, that if, they just do it, all you gotta do is ask, and they'll do it, and they just go along and enjoy their job and do what needs to be done. Uh, we have recently had a couple of meetings with the people who are our citizens that live in Briarwood, which is part of the city of Hamlet, and we've had some, uh, meetings out there with them about, uh, safety and, uh, community watch, and they have also requested that at some point the city look at, look at the streetlights out there, so that's something that we may want to look at in the future. There are none out there. And, uh, the Seaboard Festival, it went terrific. We could not have asked for a more beautiful day. The, uh, street was crowded all day long. Uh, the only request that, that I might have is a couple of businesses down there, the antique store is open every year during that time, and is part of the festival, and they kind of, this year, there was something put in there that took up about four spaces and had them blocked. The other thing, too, is that the cafe down there is open for the convenience of everybody, and we just need to ask the Seaboard Committee if they'll leave some kind of space in there that people can, you know, get back and forth into the, into the cafe, because they had wonderful lunch down there that day, and Ms. Jones just has done a lot for our community. Uh, the one other thing I've got is I just wanted to acknowledge, uh, the passing of Ms. Willie Mae Calder. And, uh, Ms. Calder was a big, uh, addition to our community. All of her children, she was a school teacher, all of her children are either schoolteachers or involved in the community. Uh, one of her sons is a former fire chief of the East Rockingham Fire Department, and her son-in-law is currently fire chief of East Rockingham Fire Department, and, uh, she died suddenly the other day, and worked on Mr. Terrible, so I did wanna acknowledge that. And that's all I have.
Um, I wanna add one more thing, Mayor. Uh, I, I don't know who all missed it on Facebook or in the newspaper or whatever, but I'm sitting out here seeing him sit, and I'm gonna call him out, but, uh, Mr. Jacobs here in the five K at the Seaboard Festival, uh, ran this, uh, five K slash walk, but it was only a little while, and he was in full uniform, and the only thing that he did not have was his, uh, handheld walkie-talkie and the mic. He was where he was in full gear, and that's...
And he had his dog.
You know, and, and toting the dogs.
But the dogs were on the drug and throw, I bet.
Um, I wanted to recognize him, because as people see that, that's a, that's a major eye-opener for the community, when they see things like that. So I personally thank you for doing that. People look at that and see it, and it, it raises a flag for Hamlet, is a good thing, so, uh, thank you for doing that.
Paul Estes, the new running outfit.
Mr. McQueen, did you think what else?
Okay. I did.
All right, at, at this time, I need a motion to go into closed session for General Statute One Forty-three, Three Eighteen, Eleven, A Three, for current attorney-client privilege matters and A Six personnel matters.
So moved to go in closed session.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor?